The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Town Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, June 14, 2018, 7:00 PM. We'll begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. And Councilman Wazorko, if you'll please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a special night tonight for us. We have a couple of presentations to do, but we do have a few students that are here as winners of a Memorial Day essay contest. And they're here tonight. I'm hoping they're both here. And what I'd like to do is ask them to come up individually to read their essays for us. The first one I have is Kaylee Fangiulo from Wheeler School. Is Kaylee here? Nope. Maybe she'll be here in a few minutes. The second student is Gianna Fendelorini. Is Gianna here also? From Linden Street School? Well, I'm sure they're at home doing homework. As they should be. We had thought they would be here tonight, but maybe they can make it to one of our other meetings. We'd like to have them back at any time that they can. So with that, we also have a few more other presentations tonight. The folks that we're going to be recognizing are people that have been volunteers in town organizations for a number of years. And many of them have been doing this for a very, very long time. And what I must say about all of our volunteers, whether in the fire department or on our boards and commissions, the work you do is very important. And I know that it takes time away from your family. It takes a lot of thoughtful deliberation oftentimes when you're looking at things that are going to be affecting the town. And I can't say enough how much the Town Council appreciates everybody that steps up to volunteer for these various organizations. But tonight, we have three people who have served and have since gone on to do some other things, and we are going to recognize them tonight. The folks we're recognizing are Linda Ferguson. Linda was on our insurance commission. Gail Paglisi, who has been on the ZVA. And Jeffy Romano, who has been on our fire department. So what I'd like to do is start off with Jeff Romano. And if Councilman Saunders would be so kind as to do the presentation for that plaque, that would be great, then we'll do Linda and Gail together.
Jeff, you have so many of your fellow firefighters here tonight, chiefs, past chief. And a lot of people know how hard a job that is volunteering for the fire department. All the hours, the lost time with your family, all the effort that gets put in to keep the rest of the town safe. And we're here tonight to celebrate your 21 years of service to the Plainville Fire The plaque doesn't say everything that we really want to express to you. For all your efforts and, again, all the time that you've given. You know, the pasta suppers, the old timers. You know, you really, you went above and beyond just being a firefighter, and we do appreciate that. So what your plaque says is "In deepest appreciation to Jeffrey Romano for 21 years of volunteer service as a member of the Plainville Fire Company, protecting the town of Plainville without reservation, demonstrating tremendous care and concern for his community in defense of lives, safety, and property of its residents in their greatest time of need." And it's dated today, June 4, 2018, by the Plainville Town Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause) Boy, Jordy. I'm not real good at speaking, but one thing I would like to say, that this was probably the best 21 years of my life outside of my marriage and my children. What a great group of guys. They all became family. I would do anything for any of them. It's, I think it's more than just volunteering for your town. It's, it's a brotherhood that a lot of people don't really understand. And it's something that, you know, anybody who's thinking about getting in and volunteering should do it. It's great for the town, and it's great for the person. I mean, you grow as a person. You're, you know, you're able to help other people in their worst times. And like I said, I would never trade it for anything. And the chief, assistant chief, deputy chief machine, he's become like a brother to me. If I didn't do this, I don't think my life would be complete. I mean, this was really a great experience, and I want to thank everyone and thank the Town Council for this award. Thank you. (applause)
Well said. Right now, I would like to call to the podium both Gail Paglisi and Linda Ferguson. Could it be on TV?
Gee, thanks.
Well, I'm calling you both up because I've gotten to know both of you, Gail, forever. I've known Gail for a very long time. But Linda and Gail actually worked together at Carling Technologies, and Gail is a recent retiree of Carling. So I thought this would be nice for both of you to come up here together.
I'm close behind, so.
Oh, you are. Oh, good for you. Well, I'm sure Gail will tell you that it's a wonderful time of her life, and she's enjoying every minute of it. So it's certainly something to look forward to. But for Linda, we have a certificate, which I'd like to read. This is a volunteer service recognition certificate from the Town of Plainville for your valuable selfless commitment and nine years of service to the community as a member of the insurance commission presented to Linda Ferguson. It's dated June 4, 2018. It's signed by me, Ty Cox, Jesse Nazzo, Rosemary Moranti, Scott Saunders, Deborah Tompkins, and Christopher Wazorko. So again, we certainly do appreciate all the time and energy. That's an important commission for us, and your volunteerism does not go unnoticed. So thank you so much, Linda.
Thank you very much.
And for Gail, Gail has, Gail has been a member of the zoning board of appeals for almost 19 years. That's a long time to be on one of those land use commissions, and I'm sure there were times where it was challenging but rewarding for you, Gail. And we really do appreciate all the time that you have and energy you've put into it. As I said earlier, all of these volunteers take time away from their family, take time away from their friends, and they're there when they're needed. And I cannot say it enough how much we appreciate all the volunteers in our town. And to stay doing it as long as you ladies have is certainly a testament to your love of Plainville. Now, Gail, there's a plaque on order for you. I don't have it for you tonight, but I promise you, you will be getting a plaque. I'll personally deliver it to you. Congratulations again, both of you. Thank you so much for your service to the town. We really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. That takes care of our presentations tonight. We do not have a public hearing, so I will go right in and ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes from May 21, 2018, special and regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Announcements or reports? Do we have any announcements or reports tonight from anybody?
Can we possibly give a note to anybody that might want to meet?
I'm sure they want to stay for the whole meeting, right? (laughter)
They take it personally.
Never.
Didn't call them on the line.
Yeah, my interest.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Back to our, back to our item announcements and reports. Does anybody have anything to report?
I will report two things.
Go ahead.
First one is, I attended the unveiling of the gazebo with a couple of other council members at Senior Housing, or at the Housing Authority. A gazebo that was put together by tech ed students from Plainville High School, and they did a beautiful job on it. And I'm sure other council members that were there will speak to that. But it's nice to see our students getting involved in creating things that are on display and in use around town. And the only other thing I want to say is, this coming Saturday is Wings and Wheels at Robertson Airport from 10 to 3. Definitely come out, take an airplane or helicopter ride, and look at what we have to offer in Plainville. And it supports two charities, the Pettet Family Foundation and the Plainville Community Food Pantry.
Thank you. Anybody else? I wanted to also, I was going to mention the project that the tech ed students from Plainville High School finished. Mr. Marchese and Mr. Chase were the teachers that were involved with the assembly and the planning and the whole, the whole project. It really is a wonderful space for folks to get out and sit outside. Councilwoman Moranti was there as well. Rosemary, did you have any few words to add?
It was very nice, and I think it's something that the residents will really enjoy during, especially during the summer months.
Yeah. That's very good. Okay. Thank you. If there are no other reports, we'll move on. Report of the Town Attorney. Attorney?
Nobody reported from that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you. And Robert, report of the Town Manager.
I got an appointment. What was the appointment?
Oh, I skipped something. My apologies. Appointments and resignations. And we do have one tonight.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Adam Bergenti as a regular member of the Aviation Commission for the term ending October 31, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Since I've been on the commission, Adam attends the meetings, and he is a very good voice to have there, and he adds input, and it's appreciated.
Okay. Great. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any other appointments tonight that are not on our agenda? No? Okay. Now, we shall move on to, report of the Town Manager.
Thank you. I have a couple of items. The first is the Water Pollution Control Phosphorus Removal Upgrade Project Bid. On May 17, bids were received for the Water Pollution Control Phosphorus Upgrade Project. A low bid was submitted by Daniel O'Connell's Sons of Holyoke, Mass. in the amount of $11,164,000. This is approximately $330,000 less than the engineer's estimate for the project. The consultants from Ty &amp; Bond have reviewed the bids and met with the Capital Products Building Committee last week. The committee is recommending that the bid be awarded to O'Connell's Sons. The second low bidder, Lawrence Brunelli, Inc. of Farmington, filed a protest citing that there were price discrepancies in the O'Connell's bid, over these were considered minor and did not change the order of the bids. The Town Attorney and the Construction Attorney agreed with this conclusion as well. You have information with regards to that in your packages. There is an item under new business that would award the Water Pollution Control Phosphorus Upgrade Improvements to Daniel, Daniel O'Connell's Sons of Holyoke, Mass. in the amount of $11,164,000 as recommended by the Capital Projects Building Committee. And I will point out that Joseph Paloso, who's the superintendent of the Waste Water Treatment Plan, is here this evening if you have any questions as well. So I know that he attended the meetings and has participated in this project all the way through.
Okay.
There's no questions. The next item I have is the summer meeting schedule. The Town Council has traditionally had an abbreviated meeting schedule during the summer months. Town staff is recommending that the Town Council cancel the first meetings of the months during July, August, and September. If that is agreeable by the Town Council, the meeting dates would then be July 16, August 20, and September 17. Special meetings could be scheduled if necessary. Next item I have is liability auto and property insurance discussion. The Town Council conducted a work session on May 7 to discuss potential options for liability auto and property insurances for the town. Town staff were directed to gather some additional information to be brought back to the Town Council for tonight's meeting. Finance Director Rob Buden and Dan Anderson from HD Seeger, the town's insurance consultants are here this evening to give some additional information. They will also be presenting a recommendation for your consideration of their new business. So with your permission, I'd like to ask both of them to step forward.
Sure.
I believe it'll be a relatively brief discussion as it's a follow-up from our work session. As you may recall, we did solicit bids for this, for these, for this insurance, and I think you'll be, I think most people will be pleased with the results.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. As Robert mentioned, we went out and got the information you requested us to do. We initially planned on just going out for LAP coverage, which is a liability auto and property. But the numbers, which I believe you have some numbers in front of you, are just overwhelming to not go with the workers' comp at the same time. So what we're recommending is to move both of our policies, LAP and workers' comp, from Kermit to Trident Insurance with substantial dollar savings. And you can see the difference in what we're paying this year, which is that very first column, to the third column. It's almost $200,000 difference. The numbers are just too big to not do both. I'm Mr. Avili, I'm a little concerned about the workers' comp side because that's more outside of my office. It affects many different departments, but through the help of our broker, I think we'll be able to get through it. The LAP coverage, everything kind of goes through me, just bill payments, claims if we have any, you know, things like that. So I'm confident that'll be, you know, fairly easy to handle. But these numbers are just too big to pass up the savings. So our, our recommendation at this point is to go to Trident, if you so approve.
So this is effective July 1?
This will be effective July 1, yes.
Okay. Going forward?
Yep.
All right. Did we budget a little bit more than this in our July 1 outlook?
Yep. Yeah, if you recall, our budget that was first presented to you was, you know, in a worst-case scenario, we did come back to you and say we could reduce it a little bit, and if we were to go out to bid, we could probably reduce it a little bit more. The budget was adopted as originally presented, so the budget is actually about $200,000 higher than what these numbers are actually going to come in at.
Okay.
So it's, you know, it's a win-win. So I think it was 75 to 80 that we originally said we could reduce. It's even more than that now because of the soft market conditions.
Okay. That's wonderful.
So we could probably use the money in other places. So, I mean, you know.
Well, there's always a mystery with budgeting when we're talking about the state of Connecticut as well.
Well, that's exactly right, yeah.
It's always nice to have at least a little something somewhere that we can breathe a little easier, if you will.
Yeah, no, and the budget clients we've had the last few years, you know, to have good news like this is actually, it's a breath of fresh air, so.
Yeah.
We'll see how it goes for this coming year.
Does anybody have any questions for Rob? His recommendation? We don't have to, do we have to vote on this, Robert?
Yes.
Or is this just, this is later on in our?
Yeah, in business.
In our agenda.
Just to approve the vendor, the company Trident.
Okay. Wonderful. Thanks so much for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Next item I have is the high school parking lot bid. Last Thursday, bids were open for the repaving of the high school parking lots and other areas around the athletic fields. Two bids were received, and the low bid was submitted by B&amp;W Pavement and Landscaping of Waterford, Connecticut, in the amount of $1,625,000. There were also eight alternates, which totaled $345,500. The low bid currently exceeds the amount allocated for the project. ONG, the construction manager for the project, has met with the two bidders to determine what changes can be made to bring the cost of the project in line with the current budget. As a result of these discussions, ONG is recommending that some changes be made to the specifications and then to rebid the project. The goal is to still have this work done this summer. They intend to make the changes go out to bid again as soon as possible and hopefully be in a position to have the project done this summer. But due to the, the amount of the bids and the amount budgeted, and in talking with the contractors, they felt that there were some changes that could be made that could bring the bid down to where we need it to be.
They'll be talking to both of those companies that put in bids for this?
They've spoken to them already.
Both of them?
Already.
Okay.
So the plan now is to make the changes after those discussions. The contractors suggested some, some changes that could bring the cost down. They explained why maybe there were only two bidders, that's why there weren't more bidders, we were anticipating more bidders. And so those changes are going to be made, and hopefully there'll be more competition, and, and we'll be able to bring the price down, you know, where it needs to be, like I said earlier.
And they're still anticipating this will be done over this summer season, correct?
Yeah, we hope to have the bids back perhaps by the end of the month. It may require, you know, the Capital Products Building Committee will have to review it, make a recommendation to the council. It may require you to have a special meeting, you know, just maybe on that particular, you know, to get, to get at least a quorum with the council together. We're going to try to, again, do it as quickly as possible.
Okay.
This is a project that needs to be done during the summer months. We prefer not to lose the season, if possible. All right?
Okay. Thanks.
Next item I have is the Revenue Collector Suspense List Discussion. The Revenue Collector has submitted the suspense list to the Town Council for consideration. The suspense list includes delinquent motor vehicle, personal property, real estate, and taxes owed by deceased persons that are deemed to be what is called uncollectible. Despite being considered uncollectible, town staff will still continue to attempt to collect these taxes, utilizing a collection agency, or the Town Attorney, or, or the constables. Anna Legassi, who is the Revenue Collector, is here this evening to answer any questions that the Town Council have, may have regarding the suspense list. And there is an item under new business as well. So I know that we gave you a list of the suspense list. You know, I can tell you, you know, motor vehicles, you know, there are people who move out of state, don't pay their motor vehicle taxes, until they come back and want to register a car. There's really no way to get back at them other than to perhaps threaten them with a collection agency. You know, sometimes that's effective, sometimes it isn't. With regards to personal property, businesses close up, they move out of town, they take their personal property with them, and, you know, there's not much option with respect to that. With real estate, it's generally the paper roads, you know, roads that, you know, they're not, they're parcels of land that were intended to be roads at some point in time and, you know, from developers from way back. And, you know, they're not, you know, they're not, they're small, you know, parcels, and, you know, there's, you know, there's a possibility that we could, you know, go through the foreclosure process, but we have to track down, you know, the owners of the land in order to give them notice, and that's a time-consuming operation. And obviously, the people who have passed away, it's going to be difficult to collect on them as well. So, you know, that's, but again, the Tax Collector's Office, the Revenue Collector's Office does, you know, continue to, to make efforts to collect these taxes. And in fact, we do collect, you know, some monies on this, you know, even though they're on the suspense list. But what it does is it takes them off our books in terms of, you know, showing as, you know, as an account receivable. It doesn't really make sense, from an accounting standpoint, to have this on the books as, when we really don't expect that we're, you know, that we're going to be able to collect these taxes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions here, Robert, so far with his report?
Anna, is there anything you want to add to that, or? Come up if you're late.
What? I can't hear you.
Talking to Anna, not you.
It's so slowly.
No, just that we do have a report that I, that I keep track of, and I'll keep track of whoever's been collected. So even though it's in suspense, I still use that as a, as a revenue coming in. It's just when it's taken off, it's not counted as, like he said, revenue. It's not something that we feel we're going to be able to do our budget accordingly to this, to this amount. This year, it's a little bit higher, not by, not by much, maybe like $20,000 more than last year, but it's still, again, it stays about the same every year. And like you said, the, the real estate is really just the lands that we're trying to work on, and we are working with Matriani, they're with Matriani right now.
Okay. Thanks, Anna.
Mm-hmm. No problem.
With that in mind, I'll turn it over to Scott for happenings. He's got a list.
I have a very short, brief happenings list this evening. Over at the Senior Center, Veterans Coffee Hour is being hosted tomorrow, June 5, at 10:30 AM with Wayne Rue, a Veterans Liaison for Hartford Healthcare. And this is for all veterans over the age of 60 and their spouses. They ask that you call the Senior Center to register for the event. On Tuesday, June 5, at 1:00 PM, they are hosting a class on Understanding Parkinson's Disease. Gain a broader, a broader understanding of the symptoms, treatment, and management of Parkinson's disease, and this is presented by Catherine McGuire, and this is a free event for all. Healthy Eating for Weight Loss on Wednesday, June 6, at 11:00 AM. This is a free workshop that will present ways to eat healthy and be conscious of healthy eating throughout our lives. They will discuss what it means to be healthy as we age. Please call the Senior Center to register for that as one event as well. Grandparents Raising Grandchildren is being hosted on Tuesday, June 12, at 10:30 AM. Attend this monthly event to share resources, ideas, struggles, and joys, and more, with others who are raising their grandchildren as well. The funding for this program is made possible in part by the Older Americans Act through the North Central Area Agency on Aging. And on Thursday, June 14, at 11:00 AM, they're hosting Butterflies of the World. It is being presented by John Root, naturalist and educator, and they ask that you register for that at 860-747-5728. And that's all I have to report on.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Scott with his report? Thank both of you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We'll move on to our public comment of the reception of our meeting. During this portion of the meeting, we welcome the public to come to either podium. Please state your name and address. You'll be given one opportunity to speak to the council for three minutes. I do have somebody that signed up first, so Catherine Labella, you'll be first. Anybody that wishes to speak after that will certainly recognize you.
Catherine Labella, 50 Pierce Street. I oppose alignment C at the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail. On May 30, the registered repeat sex offender was arrested after exposing himself on the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail in Hamden. He did this in front of cyclists and joggers. There were families with children nearby. I can almost hear you thinking, oh, I knew this would come up. We don't need to hear this. The trail is safe. I believe you do need to hear this from people whose lives are being and will be negatively impacted by this trail. Things like this are already happening in Plainville and in other communities. Several years ago, I was walking my dog in Norton Park. It was almost dusk, and I was finishing my walk with a park buddy and her dog. She reached her car first, and I continued to walk. A man on a bike came up to me, seemingly out of nowhere. He began asking questions about my dogs, about dog, then socially inappropriate questions about me. Thankfully, my walking buddy saw this and drove up to us to see if we were okay. The man quickly rode off. I bring my dog to a chiropractic vet in East Granby. On the way home, we often stop and walk a section of the trail in Sinsbury. One day, we were followed by someone who, thank goodness, had obviously been drinking. I say that because my dog and I were able to outdistance him. Both times, I had my cell phone with me, but I've often wondered what would happen on either occasion if I had been less fortunate. I chose to walk on public land and trails on both of these occasions that I've mentioned. I chose my home in a quiet and relatively safe neighborhood in Plainville, as others who addressed their concerns about the impact of this trail with you. We want our neighborhoods and our homes to continue to be safe. We want our neighborhoods and our homes to continue to be safe. When we see a registered sex offender so obviously chose the trail to prey on its users, we become concerned about the sex offender who is not so obvious. Will the children at the bus stop addressed by the Perron Road residents be affected? Will the children on Pierce Street or Broad Street be exposed to this or other more threatening behavior? How about the people attending an historical society event? Will they enjoy this type of spectacle? I know that I do not want to see it from my back porch. Please say no to any future phase of alignment C through Plainville neighborhoods, especially since there are state roads that can safely accommodate this trail through town. I respectfully request that this full statement in the attached article become part of the public record along with the council minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? John?
John Kislick, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. Good evening, town councilors.
Good evening.
I have a few issues tonight. New Britain hurled Tuesday, May 29th. Environmental panel takes dim view of Tilkon Plan. I wish all of you would read the complete article, I'll read the first paragraph. A state environmental council has concluded that the Tilkon mining proposal would be adverse and that a study of the plan doesn't establish the need for a new reservoir. I've been after this council for a long time to make a decision one way or the other. By not rejecting this, I feel that you are doing a disservice to the citizens of Plainville and our health and future safety of our water. Next thing, the two young ladies that were here last meeting on their recycling, you know, that, that doesn't make much sense to me. Supposedly our tonnage has been over lately, but I'm wondering if that has, I don't know how they set, how much tonnage were allowed. And I'm wondering if the 740 homes that used to be picked up by Bristol aren't included in this or wasn't figured right when we added them into CWPM now and the other person before. So are we really over our, our tonnage that's allowed or is there some kind of figure that's wrong? I wish the council would look into that and then give me an answer. But the other part is, it doesn't make sense that you're going to, you think you're going to force people to put more into recycling. What I think you'll do, if they have to buy these bags, I think people will be throwing stuff into recycle that doesn't belong into recycle because there you don't have to bag it. It's, it's, I don't think it's a good plan. I think what we're doing is fine. I think most of the people recycle, I know I do. And we're only, we only recycle every other week, so, you know, it's telling you something. So maybe, you know, I hope this council weighs that one too. I, I really don't like it. I don't think it's a good idea. I think what we're doing now is fine. The other thing I have is the bump outs. Again, you've probably seen the one out here, the entrance to the police station, somebody ran down the sign again. And probably five months ago, the one at Pierce Street was run down. I saw, um, car parts there, fan shroud or something, other parts of the, the car. I mean, this is dangerous and especially now you have a bicycle lane right through there too. For bicycles to go around that bump out, they're going to go right into a car lane and you have the bump out on the other side, you know, you have two cars coming, they're going to, the possibility of head-on collisions. I mean, those bump outs are worthless. They're not slowing anybody down. And I asked before to remove those bump outs. They're worthless. And the same thing at Pierce Street. I mean, the people have to go so wide to go around that turn. It's, it's just ridiculous and, and they're a waste of space and they are dangerous, especially, like I said, with our bicycle paths. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
I need my Tilkon report.
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. The mill rate has been set for this year and yet we have a, a referendum on the fire truck issue coming up in a few weeks, which could put the town 2 million, 2.2 million, whatever, further into debt. Well, if, if that refer, if the referendum passes, will this affect the mill rate? Will you have to revisit the mill rate to adjust for the extra expense that's going to be needed?
No, we won't have to do that.
Okay. So I mean, I don't know when we start paying on that if the, the referendum passes, so I'm not, has that been figured into the budget that?
The reason the council decided to do a long-term borrowing on these trucks rather than put it into our, our annual capital budget is because we have old debt that is retiring, meaning it's coming off of our, our debt service line. So we can borrow additional monies without it affecting the mill rate at this point in time.
Okay. I mean, maybe my understanding of economics is a little simplistic, but I mean, it seems like, okay, you buy the truck, but you have to pay for it, so.
Yes, we do.
So how can that kind of not affect the?
The council has established a, a long-term plan for our capital and for our long-term borrowing. And we've, we've set aside a certain amount of money every year that will be dedicated to paying down our long-term debt. And as I said, we have debt that is coming off. In other words, it's retiring, it's no longer going to be there. So we can borrow other monies and it'll just fill that, that gap. So it's not going to change the outlook that we've put together over the next many years.
Well, I mean, on a personal basis, understanding, I mean, it sounds to me like you're saying, well, we're paying off the credit card, it's time to max it out again. I hope we're not.
That's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying.
Not having that kind of attitude.
That's not what I'm saying, sir, at all. No.
Okay. Well, I mean, it seems like that's how the, the Wheeler School was sold to the, the public that, okay, we've paid down the debt.
Correct.
Time to get more debt, you know, so. I mean, I'm sure there are expenses, but, I mean, it would be nice if, you know, sometime in the future, you know, we could pay down the debt and kind of keep it down, you know?
Well, there, that, that would be lovely in a perfect world. However, the town has ongoing needs and some of the ongoing needs are doing major improvements to our schools and to our firehouses and to our libraries and to all of our other buildings and that requires capital. And the, one of the other things we've identified is the best way to finance are these two fire trucks. There's always going to be a need for the town to take care of its capital. So to just say, well, the debt came off, we're not going to do anything else with that money, wouldn't really be a very responsible way of looking at your long-term plan.
No, no, understood. I, I just don't want, you know, I'm hoping there isn't any kind of attitude, well, we've paid off some debt, let's look for something else to, to spend it on.
Well, I, I understand how you could interpret it that way, but again, as I said, there's always a need running a municipality for things that have to be taken care of. And if we can borrow some money at, at a fairly low interest rate right now to take care of these things that are hopefully going to last 25 to 30 years, it's probably the best way to do it at this point in time.
Okay. Well, one other question. Couple of meetings ago, Chairwoman McGlacy, you know, I, I spoke about the, the, the town budget vote and how I didn't feel it was really publicized as well as it could have been. And one of your comments was that you felt you had the signage out for the appropriate number of days before the event. I, I, could you clarify that for me a little bit? What is the appropriate number of days before the event? And I mean, is that some kind of a agreement rule, statute, whatever?
Not really. I think it just is a common sense approach to putting them out a couple of weeks before the, the budget vote so that people see them. If we put them out a month ahead, people see them and then it almost becomes invisible after seeing it for so many times. It doesn't actually stay with people.
Well, I don't know if I'd agree with that.
That point could be argued. I agree. But I think we put them out a couple of weeks before the, the budget vote. I believe there is plenty of publicity when our budget vote takes place through the various media that we have. We have a, a televised meeting schedule. Every meeting that we talk about the budget, it's on television. We also televised every one of our work sessions. People could watch every single one of them if they were interested. So I think there is, there is a sincere effort to put the information out. Whether people choose to participate, that's, that's their personal preference, but I believe we do a very good job of publicizing it.
Okay. I'm not sure how many people are tuned in to Nutmeg TV, but, you know, hopefully they are.
Oh, I, people do watch because people comment to me about it. So I would, I'm surprised about the number of people that do watch. Maybe not all the time, but they tune in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody?
Dave Albert, 56 Highbury Lane. I wanted to talk about the, this Board of Ed extension that, that, I'd like to know how much it actually costs in the town. I understand there's, you know, varying rates of wage increases, but would I be off in saying that it's around $600,000 for this new extension on the contract?
Are you talking about the teacher's contract?
Yes.
I, I don't have that exact number, so I couldn't tell you if you're accurate or not. I could find out for you.
I would, I would appreciate that.
You want to know what the extension cost?
Yeah.
For that one year?
Yes. Okay. And I'd also like to know why, with all these insurance overages, are the teachers not kicking in more than what they, what they have in the past? That, I mean, what's basically happening is the taxpayers are funding 100% of the employees' premiums, the overages.
No, the, the employees contribute toward their health.
I, I know they contribute, but they're contributing, at, at the last meeting, they were saying that their, their percentage is staying the same. And I don't, and anywhere else, you go to a, a private company, this type of situation, they would increase their, their co-pay. I mean, it, it's, it's beyond me why that wasn't even addressed.
Well, it is my understanding that the Board of Education, along with the administration, agreed to a one-year extension. Now, those things will be looked at when the contract is renegotiated, most certainly. That will be looked at at that point in time after the one-year extension.
But why wasn't?
It's a contract, so unless they go back in and reopen the whole contract to discuss that, that is the agreement that they came to.
Yeah, I, I just wonder why you would extend it, given this whole atmosphere now. I mean, the state of Connecticut, this was the one year that they were going to meet their budget, perhaps. Going forward, it, it, it's even worse and it's going to get even worse. And I, I don't know why the Board of Ed would extend a, a, the, the contract and basically tie their hands. Because what's going to happen is they, they basically give them another year of, of goodness. So that's just me. I mean, it, it, well, whatever. I mean, let me move on to something else here. Going to Mr. Kislick's thing about Tilkon. You need to look at the Hartford Current, they had a, an article on it and they had pictures from up above of the absolute devastation that this does. And a lot of that's hiking trails. It's beautiful up there and it's 100% kill on all the animals living there. And last but not least is our, my friends at Oakland Development with their wanting the town to take their land. Sounds like a great deal. However, you take $80 per year, which doesn't sound much, but you use the, what they call the AFR rates with the IRS, IRS publishes for June, you're talking about $3,000 that you would have to deposit in order to get that 80 bucks a year. And that's forever. And I question why they didn't just throw it in with the, the people that, their house that they sold it on. Because I, I just think it's bad, bad, bad that the town would take this because it's setting a precedent for any developer taking land and then taking the bad stuff and just trying to dump it back on the town. So, thank you. Oh, I wanted to thank you for the flag you gave me at the parade. Thank you.
It was free, right?
Yes.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not? Marilyn?
Good evening, councilmembers and members of the community. Marilyn Shoret, 18 Milford Street in Plainville. And I wanted to support Kathy Labella and her opposition to this trail. I cannot fathom why any one of you on this council, I'm just embarrassed that you haven't considered the financial end of it, never mind the danger that is being proposed to the people, both physically, you know, I'm talking about walking down Pierce Street, down the middle of Broad Street or the side, whichever one you decide on, not to mention the financial. $2 million to go under a highway? We're broke. I've said this before at another council meeting, we don't have the money. And whether you decide on it now or five years down the road, it's not acceptable to me. I think you should have allowed this to go to the people and let the people in this town vote on it. I don't think that it should be an issue for all of you. I think it should go to us. And I hope that you'll think about that in the future. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Okay. Ah, Joanne.
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. Oh, yes, that trail. Have you reca, I, I spoke about it the last time it was, you know, we had a meeting here and I said can, can, C-A-N-it, meaning alignment C, and think about going left on Northwest Drive to Route 10, go down that way or why don't you consider alignment D, which goes at the edge of the industrial park and figure it out through the woods and over the river and through the woods or whatever's over there. But alignment C is just ridiculous. It's just absolutely insane to want to go down Pierce Street or to, or the, the backside of Perron Road and Pierce Street, middle of Broad Street or either side. You're going to have those poles right in people's living rooms. They, they haven't, Broad Street hasn't even woken up to this yet. I've talked to a few people and, and they're like, oh, yeah, yeah, you know, they're sleeping. They got to wake up, just like I said, wake up Plainville. They should, wake up Plainville. Plainville people should have gone down to the, to the voting booth. They should have struck down that budget, which is too darn high. You're, you're $2 million here, $2 million, and that stupid parking lot over at the high school that you sailed in. that you sailed in and attached to the Wheeler School project. That's not very nice. And that's too much money, another $2 million for that, that project. It's not realistic, and it's like a flim-flam to the people. It's, what? Another million, $2 million? And it's, it's too much money. That whole school project is too much money. You got a very expensive architect in there dealing with all this. Castle and Booth, they, I'm forgetting the name, oh, that sounds like, they, I think they've been attached to too many of our projects, and I don't think that they actually have done a good job over there. It's, they've caught, it's cost us too much money. And Linden Street School cost us too much money. You had to bring in 45 extra kids from another locale to justify that building. Now, I'm holding my breath about Wheeler School. I think I've heard the right information now, that you're gonna pick special, or you're gonna pick pre-K kids and bring them over. I think, we'll see. But I hope it's not gonna be 45 kids from another locale, which is gonna cost us taxpayers $13,000, $14,000 per kid per year. That really adds up to an awful lot of money. So, there's so many issues, so many, so many issues, I'm too numerous to cover tonight. The quarry, I say no to participating in that project. No, 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 no. Do you not understand the word "no"? And where is your opinion on it? We don't hear anything from the council's side of it. No, no, we, we know what no means. No means no. That's it. That's my take.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't spoken yet? Last chance. Okay, thank you for your comments. We'll close this section of the meeting. Moving on. We do not have any old business items, so we honor our new business.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to establish public hearing on Monday, June 18th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the municipal center to hear public comment on an ordinance entitled "Ordinance Establishing Fourth Quarter Transfers for Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2018."
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any comment on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, June 18th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the municipal center to hear public comment on an additional appropriation for the fiscal year 2018 budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to award bid number 2018-23 WPC phosphorus Removal Upgrade Project to Daniel O'Connell's Sons, Holyoke, Massachusetts, in the amount of $11,164,800.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Trident as the town's liability auto and property insurance provider effective July 1st, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Other than what's already been said, with the savings of almost $200,000, I think this is, this is a good thing for us. Thanks for all the work that went into it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the revenue collector suspenseless.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number six.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I live a lot, you get ahead. Mr. Lee, are there any other items of interest for discussion?
We do not have any, no.
Okay, thank you. Now you may, yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.